I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole for Monday, May 13th, 2019 to order. My name is Alderman Richard Marks. I with Alderman Clemens represent the Second Ward. We have a number of presentations tonight and I think Mayor, you will probably start off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item of business is to recognize a police officer as being promoted this evening and I would like to invite our friend Chris Reading to the podium. Mr. Reading?
Thank you.
And I'm not responsible for this, okay, at this point?
Well, Officer Reading commented that when you were sworn in as a police officer, I was traveling and you had Alderman Miladra preside.
Sorry.
No, it was good. It was good. And remember, you sent me that email saying, "Who is Miladra?"
Right.
You have a fan base with you this evening.
I do.
Would you like to introduce your special guests?
I have my father, my daughter Carly, my son Knox, my mother, and my wife Lindsay.
Carly and Knox?
Correct.
Okay. The name Knox, man, where does that come from?
Just liked it.
I've never heard of it. It's awesome. It's awesome. Will he get a full ride in Knox College?
I'd have to ask.
Maybe they'll tune in.
Maybe.
So how long have you been on board, Officer?
Seven and a half years here. That was a year previous with another department.
And what town do you claim your home?
Well, I grew up here, so I guess this is always home. I don't currently reside here, but...
And you graduated Geneva High School, may I ask, what year?
2005.
2005. Those were good years, weren't they?
They were.
Yeah. Is there a statue of you at the high school?
The big Viking out front? Is that the one?
No. I was thinking of something more like in the men's restroom. So after high school, what did you do?
Went to Western Illinois, studied criminal justice.
Which is really the premier institution in the state?
Yes.
For building, developing cops.
Correct.
And you always knew you wanted to be a police officer?
I wouldn't say always. It was probably freshman and sophomore year that I kind of really started honing in on that.
What was the bell in the head that said, "You know what? I'm gonna do this."
I don't know. There wasn't a single thing. I think, to be honest, when I first, you know, the driving fast, the lights, the excitement...
It's encouraging.
That was the first thing that kind of attracted me to it and...
Could have volunteered for God's sake, for ESDA or something. That's true. So seven and a half years, so far, so good.
Yep. Very good.
And how's the family taking?
Great.
Yeah?
Yep. Yeah, everything is good. Supportive. Fortunately, I have the ability to let my wife be a mom, so she gets to stay home and with our kids and things great.
Absolutely. Dad, what did you do that helped build this young man to what he is today?
You know, I taught him. His golf swing is a very valuable tool.
What is your handicap, Officer?
It's hard to say now because I work. I don't get out a lot, but at its peak, it was scratch.
We still have the front page picture of Reading shoots back-to-back birdies against...
Eagles.
Or eagles, I'm sorry. Back-to-back eagles.
Against Batavia.
Against Batavia.
Whoa. Now, did Mom and Dad have to pay for that article to be kind of like Lori Loughlin or no?
No, luckily, we had Dave Hune, who wrote the sports articles, and Mitch was one of my teammates, so...
Oh, that's cool. What was your best round?
65.
Really? What course?
Blackberry Oaks in Yorkville.
That's a putt-putt course.
The windmill and the clown and everything, yep.
Congratulations. It's exciting. What's your favorite set of clubs? What brand?
I currently play Nikes.
You do?
Yeah.
Are you sponsored by Nike?
I'm not. I'd like to be.
Other than golf, what do you do to unwind, hang out with, of course, Knox and Carly and Mrs. Reading?
Uh, workout, try new restaurants. That's about it. Golf, yard work.
You still golf, though?
I try to.
So there's a lot of people tuning in, as you well know, and of course, your team is behind you?
Correct.
As well as representatives from the Fire Department. What's your message to everyone tuning in about being a first responder, as it were, a public safety professional? One of the good guys?
I think right now, I think my message is just understand that we have a tough job to do and it's not always easy on the outside looking in. And I think my biggest response is to let us do our jobs.
You said the same thing to your golf coach, didn't you?
Did.
That didn't work out well. Mom, any comments?
Nope, just very proud of him. Very proud.
I'm very proud.
Chris, I have the honor of reading or administering the oath to you and of course, as we spoke beforehand, if you'd like to invite anyone to join you while we do so, this is all about you.
More than happy to come up.
Right there, right there.
I sense that you're gonna be a chief of police. Raise your right hand, Officer. Please repeat after me. I, Christopher Reading...
I, Christopher Reading.
Having been promoted to the position of patrol sergeant...
Having been promoted to the position of patrol sergeant.
In the city of Geneva, County of Kane...
City of Geneva, County of Kane.
...at fore-said...
At fore-said.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances...
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of patrol sergeant...
Of patrol sergeant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. Congratulations.
You can watch on TV. Now, Mrs. Reading is putting the badge on patrol sergeant Reading. Ladies and gentlemen, Sergeant Reading.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Thank you. Bruno Kilburg. Yep, just one order of business that I didn't do ahead of time. Alderman Bruno and Alderman Kilburg, I not present at the meeting. All the other Aldermen are. Mayor, I believe we have one other presentation?
We do, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to introduce to the Committee of the Whole tonight those in attendance and those tuning in, my good friend Tracy, who has a presentation this evening on the Be Smart program, a program that I believe all of you will benefit from, all those tuning in will benefit from. It's my honor to welcome Tracy to the council table.
Hi, everyone.
Welcome.
How do I work this? Right.
Yeah, just double-click that.
This? No. Is there a mouse up here?
Under...
Oh! I didn't see that. Gotcha. Okay, here we go. Let me get this open. So while it's opening, I will take a moment and introduce myself along with, and then Steve will introduce himself. Be Smart, or my name is Tracy Wishers, Mayor said, and Be Smart is a part of a group called Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. And we will be taking the time today to discuss the Be Smart program. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a mom of two teenagers and I got involved with Moms Demand Action when Parkland happened. My son was a junior at the time and he came home and we were talking and we live in St. Charles and he said right out, "I don't feel comfortable going to school tomorrow. I've never felt that way, Mom." And we just had a, you know, like everyone, sense of hopelessness, helplessness, what could we do? And over the next month, I stumbled into Moms Demand Action after doing some research online and then after attending for a few months, I became involved in the program Be Smart. So that's what we're here to talk to you about today.
Hi, I'm Steve McHugh. I live here in Geneva and I work as a senior vice president for a market research company. And I got involved in the Be Smart and the Moms Demand program mainly because I have, for a number of reasons, but mainly because I have two daughters who work in schools, one as a teacher, one as a speech pathologist. And also, I grew up in a home that had loaded and unlocked guns, which is a lot about what this program is about and we'll be talking to you about.
Great. Space flare? Thank you. So as I said, we're here to talk to you about this program. I'm gonna jump right in with some statistics for you. Firearms are the second-leading cause of death for American children and the leading cause of death for black children. As this slide shows you here, nearly 1,500 American children between 0 and 17 are killed every year with guns. That's an average of four a day. When American children are killed with guns, the majority of these deaths are homicides, about 53 percent. And then 500 children die by firearm suicide every year and an additional 100 are unintentionally shot and killed with a handgun that, or with the gun that they never should have had access We know that approximately 4.6 million US children live in a household with at least one loaded unlocked gun. While school shootings and mass shootings typically make national headlines, the reality is that for children under the age of 13, gun homicides most frequently occur in the home and those, of course, may not make the news as big as the mass shootings do. One study showed that nearly 90 percent of unintentional shooting deaths and injuries among children under the age of 15 also occur in the home. When you think of those statistics, it's, the home should be a very safe place for our children. What's more is we know that in incidents of gunfire on school grounds, 78 percent of the shooters under the age of 18 obtain their gun from a home or the home of relatives or friends. And if that gun had been locked, stored securely away from them, they would not have been able to attain it. This, of course, we all know guns and the issues around guns are a very emotional issue. Many of us may be gun owners, many of us are parents, some would never think of having a gun, but we as adults today need to make an effort to keep kids safe from guns and that's more than just telling them not to touch a gun because we all know how kids are. You tell them not to touch something and that almost increases their interest in wanting to touch it. So we all believe, or we believe in our group, that gun owners, most gun owners, do want to be responsible gun owners. So that's what we're here to talk to you about today, to gun owners, non-gun owners. And this is what we call our common ground in our group. We all want kids to grow up happy and healthy. We each have the right to make responsible decisions about how to protect our homes, whether you do own a gun or you don't. And if we can prevent even one child gun death or injury, it's our responsibility as adults to do so. So on this slide, I'm gonna discuss several headlines. Some of these you may have heard of, some of you may not. There are different towns across the country. The first one is back from January of 2018 at a high school in Kentucky. A shooter went into the school and shot 16 people, wounded two of them, shot 16 people and wounded them. Two of them unfortunately lost their lives. The 16-year-old shooter had gained access to his stepfather's unsecured pistol at home and brought it to school and that's how he was able to make this tragedy occur. The next tragedy in the upper right corner talks about a Louisiana, a Louisa toddler who was shot by their four-year-old brother when they thought the gun unfortunately was a toy and it was a loaded gun that had not been secured. This happened in May of 2018 and the four-year-old shot his two-year-old brother, which is a horrible tragedy and something that that little boy will have to live with for the rest of his life. And the gun was kept high in an upper cabinet where family members thought the children wouldn't be able to get to it. Fortunately, it wasn't up high enough. The next headline on the lower left is after a study was done talking to kids in Jackson, Mississippi, and they were talking to different teenagers and one teenager stated that in their area, they felt they needed to get access to a gun to keep them safe from muggings, burglaries, things like that. And so they would look at homes or they'd be at a friend's house and if they could grab a gun, they felt better being able to carry that on them than if they didn't have a gun. And then the last story is about teens and impulsiveness can lead to tragedy. This is a story about a 13-year-old boy named Mikey from Brewster, New York. He was a friendly, popular eighth grader, loved to play sports, loved to play video games, hang out with his friends. And in January of 2013, he came home one day, probably after a bad day at school, and found his father's unlocked loaded gun and took his own life. His family, of course, was very shocked. They knew him to be a pretty happy kid. He had friends, he was involved in different things and unfortunately, because he had that access and had that impulsiveness of a teenager, he made a very fatal tragic decision. All four of these stories show the fallout of when young people have access to unsecured guns. No story is quite the same, but they are all tragic and can all be prevented. So we're here today to talk to you about this program called Be Smart that Moms Demand Action developed several years ago. They looked at all areas of what I just talked about and decided on these five points that we will discuss with you. And I'll just do a quick overview and then Steve and I will go into each of these points to give you a better idea what it all involves. So stands for Secure Your Guns, Model Responsible Behavior, Ask About Unsecured Guns in Other Homes, Recognize the Roles of Guns in Teen Suicide, and Tell Your Peers to Be Smart. So let's start with the S, which is Secure All Guns in Homes and Vehicles. 13 million households with children contain at least one gun and the majority of children in gun-owning homes know where their parents or the adults keep the gun. And we already know that in incidents of gunfire on school grounds, many kids find these guns at their home and that's how they're able to bring them to school. The tragedy that unfolded in Marshall County High School is one of those that we talked about where the kid was able to get a gun from his family or relatives' home and was able to bring it to school and caused that tragedy. So securing guns, what does this mean? Like we saw in that other story where the family put the gun in a cabinet, unfortunately, it wasn't high enough and a young boy could reach it. So securing guns means locking them with ammunition stored separately, but locking them in a secure safe that either has a lock, a combination, a lot of them can have fingerprints now, but storing these away so that only the adults have access to it. Because as we all know, kids don't always listen to what parents and adults say and are going to touch a gun. So this would, if the guns are locked or loaded, locked and stored safely, the kids will not have access to it. I talked about the kid from Mississippi who spoke of the complicated safety reasons in their area and their neighborhood that pushed them to want a gun. Keep in mind that kids feel a variety of emotions around guns and, like I said, from curiosity to fascination to fear. And unfortunately, sometimes that curiosity overtakes the fear and finding a gun is not gonna prevent them from using it. So that's where, the research we've done and studies and talking to many families and people, locking them like this way is gonna be the safest for everyone involved. We also found that storing them safely like this decreases a risk of suicide and then the unintentional shooting that we've talked about too. One study shows that households that locked both firearms and ammunition had a 78 percent lower risk of self-inflicted firearm injuries among children and teenagers and an even 85 percent lower risk overall. And of course, that was involving adults. So the way to keep your gun locked and stored safely, like I mentioned, is cabinets, storage lockers, there's cables that you can use, a firearm safe. My husband is a gun owner and we have a safe that he has the code for and no one goes near that. My kids are teenagers, they do not have any interest in using the cabinet and my husband also has taken my son out to teach him how to safely use a gun. Unsecured guns can also contribute to a staggering number of guns stolen each year. So this is another reason for keeping them locked, not only to keep them safe from the children, but if your house is broken into, the gun will not easily be taken if it's locked away. This number is staggering of 38, 380,000 guns are stolen from private gun owners every year and unfortunately, they get into the wrong hands at that time. And so, like I said, keeping them safe this way, locked in a storage container or locked safe, storage cabinet and with a lock that only the adults have access to is really gonna help prevent a lot of these unintentional gun deaths along with the shootings that we hear with kids getting their hands on and suicide. So from here, I will let Steve take over and jump into the M.
Thank you, Tracy. So the M in SMART stands for Model Responsible Behavior. So every law-abiding citizen has the right to choose to have a gun in their home, but they also, with that right, they also have a responsibility to keep kids safe, keep it out of, not accessible to a young child who might accidentally find a gun or a teen who may be purposely looking for a gun. So it is the adult's responsibility on that. As Tracy showed on the previous slide, the majority of kids know where the parents store their gun and in fact, one-third of them claimed to have played with a gun or approached the gun without their parents' knowledge. Kids are curious and it's the adult's responsibility to keep them safe. In fact, kids who have gone through a week-long gun safety training were no less likely to approach a gun or play with a gun than those who did not. Again, they're curious and they're approaching the guns. But you can't be with them all the time. Even if you're safe with the guns, you can't be with the kids all the time. So you need to have that conversation with them on how to stay safe, what happens if you do come across a gun accidentally or otherwise. And we do have a handout to talk about this. The A in SMART is to ask about unsecured guns in other homes. So again, you can't be with them all the time and maybe they're going to a friend's for a party or a sleepover or what have you. So we want it to be the kind of conversation that you would have in any other safety situation. So if your kids are going to a party, your teen or young child is going to a party or somebody else's house for something, what are some of the kind of things you would ask? Guns aside, what are some of the kind of things that you would ask? This is the interactive part of the presentation. So anybody, what kind of things would you ask?
Peanut allergies.
Peanut allergies, exactly.
Parents gonna be home?
Parents gonna be home? Who's gonna be home? Right.
What other kids are gonna be there?
What other kids are gonna be there? Exactly. So those are the kinds of questions you would ask if they're gonna be driving anywhere, you know, who is going to be driving? Are you wearing seatbelts? Do you have car seats? Those kinds of questions. So we would like those kinds of questions to be out there. And to be able to ask these safety questions, ask about a gun in the home. Now, this can be a little bit awkward at first to ask, you know, "Do you have a gun in the home?" So if it's less intimidating to you, you can text or email. The R in SMART is recognizing the role of guns in suicide. So let's just go through a couple of points here. Most people who attempt suicide do not die unless they use a gun. Unfortunately, guns are very effective in suicide. 85 percent of suicide attempts with a gun result in death, a much higher fatality rate than any other means of self-harm. Unfortunately, two of my friends I went to college with had sons who committed suicide with a gun. This contributes to the fact that 40 percent of child suicides involve a gun and nearly half of those who survive a suicide attempt report spending 10 minutes or less thinking about it before the actual attempt. It can be a very sudden thing. It doesn't have to be, yes, this child was depressed for a long time and maybe we saw the signs. It could be something very sudden, broke up with my boyfriend or girlfriend. I did a dumb thing and that I shouldn't have done and now it's all over social media or whatever. These are the things that we have to be aware of. And as kids get older, we have to be more and more deliberate and aware of these kind of things and making sure that guns don't get in their hands. Some more statistics, a survey, CDC Centers of Disease Control Survey of high school students found that 17 percent had seriously considered attempting suicide within the last year. That's almost one in five. One study showed that 41 percent of adolescents in gun-owning households report having easy access to the guns in their homes. So this is just, again, we have some handouts for some resources that you can go to on this topic. And lastly, the T in SMART is really the power behind the Be Smart program, to tell your peers about this. You might have heard some things that resonate with you or things that you can share with friends or family in all of this. And research shows that law enforcement, military, hunting or outdoor groups are particularly effective at communicating safe storage practices. We all want to keep people safe. So just to recap, again, SMART is Secure All Guns in Your Homes and Vehicles, Model Responsible Behavior, Ask About Unsecured Guns in Other Homes, Recognize the Role of Guns in Suicide, and Tell Your Peers to Be Smart. So thank you for having us here today and we're available for any questions that you might have afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions now? I mean, from the deans? Anyone from the audience that has any questions? That was a great presentation. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. We have a handout to leave out.
Good.
Just to summarize a lot of what we talked about.
Good. Oh, wait. Please, after all...
Is this presentation on City House second?
It will be.
It will be.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. McHugh, may I ask you a question, sir?
Of course.
You and I have had the pleasure of meeting before, as Tracy and I, and your organization. How many presentations have you given?
On this subject? On this subject? This is my first. I believe this is Tracy's second.
No, I've given, this is my fourth.
Fourth, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I got involved, like in December, in this part of the, part of LOMs.
The Kane Kendall Chapter?
Yeah, exactly, yes.
When you give a presentation before adults, is there a different reception than when you give a presentation before students? And we have obviously many students with us this evening.
I mean, right now for me, it's...
It might be easier if you come up to the microphone, because then people can hear that are watching.
So the times I've given it, it's really been eye-opening for most adults. It's, a lot of it, when you think, think about it, it's common sense, like lock a gun, it's dangerous, but people, you know, you start talking to people and, yeah, I grew up, my dad had guns, like in the basement, they were like, we could reach them at any time, and I never thought about that, or I never thought about asking my neighbor. You know, my neighbor, three doors down, is a police officer, I never thought of asking, do you have guns in your home and are they locked? How do you keep them? So things like that, so a lot of it's been really eye-opening and, and good conversation with, with people when we give these presentations.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome, thank, we really appreciate you having us.
We do have a question from, please, you have to come up so that, so that everyone can hear it.
Do you have any talking points for people, for parents, when you get an answer that you don't like? Like, oh yeah, I do have guns in my home and they aren't secure, so.
They aren't secure.
How do you handle that?
Right, so, you know, we've talked about that, that's a, that's definitely a tough one. You can kind of maybe ask then if the, the playdate could be at your house, and just say you're concerned with everything you read in the news, that's definitely, because it is a bigger topic nowadays than it seemed, you know, five, 10 years ago. So that's what we've talked about is, is maybe, you know, changing the venue of where you're gonna have the kids hang out and just explain why you're concerned, and then maybe that will give the people some, some thought as to maybe it should be stored, maybe it should be locked and kept safer.
Yeah, and like, within the presentation, it's, it's part of any other safety kind of thing, no, we don't have car seats for the kids, okay?
Right.
You know, I'm not comfortable with that, or, you know.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
I do appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is to proclaim May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month. I will read the proclamation that the mayor has asked me to, and then I'll need a motion and a second to vote on it. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health and other chronic health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore, Kevin R. Burns, Mayor of the City of Geneva, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Geneva, and call upon all citizens to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect, protect their mental health, and the need for an appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Motion by Swanson, second by Clements, any questions regarding? And I will, if there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do have Cheryl Johnson from Tri-City Family Services here today. I don't know if you had to, to accept the proclamation from the mayor, and if you have some comments, please feel free.
Yes, thank you very much, I'm, it's a pleasure to be here and an honor to represent Tri-City Family Services, the current president of the Board of Directors, and Tri-City Family Services has, as you know, some of you celebrated 50 years of service to this community, we are very happy to do that. Each year, we see more and more people, and, you know, please go to our, our webpage and, and you'll get a full report from us as to everything that we've done this year. And it's been particularly helpful for people today to understand that mental illness is the same as a physical illness, you know, they're not siloed into two different parts of your body, you know, if you wanna, you have to treat your broken leg, you also have to treat depression. So I think, you know, just an awareness and of the de-stigmatization of mental health is really important, and I think we see consequences of the lack of good mental health services everywhere we look today. So I think we're very fortunate in this area to have the services that we do. Tri-City Family Services accepts insurance, it also accepts Medicaid, and we also have a sliding fee scale for those that are on, not on any of the above.
Thank you, any, any questions? Alderman, Ruby.
Just a, a quick question, you mentioned that you've seen more patients this year? I'm, I'm curious, I, I could see that as a positive or as a negative, I'm curious for your, your view on that.
Great question, Alderman, and it is both. So you're absolutely right, we're seeing again a greater awareness, you know, more people seeking services, and so we see it as a positive, that people know that we're there, that we're here in the county, and of course we see from all over the county. And so we think that it's a positive step in the recognition of being able to treat mental health. Thank you for your question.
Any other questions? Mayor, do you, would you like to present this?
I would also just like to briefly say, I had the privilege of serving on the 708 Board in Geneva for several years, and I just want to compliment that 708 Board, that group of people on there under Susie Shugard are just fantastic, and they take their job very seriously and do a lot of research as well as just the other parts of that, that board.
And with that segue, if I may, tomorrow evening, the Mental Health Board is sponsoring a community health forum, as part of the Kennedy Forums, On the Table, Your Voice Matters event. So tomorrow at 7:00 PM, there is a mental health event that we invite everybody to come out and share, and help make aware for mental health.
Our executive director, Laura Poss, will be here tomorrow.
Right.
Can we get a picture with?
Oh, sure.
If you can airbrush my side if you want to.
Airbrush.
It's the most awkward podium in the history of the world.
What did I ask?
What's that?
Thank you so much.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We now have a presentation from the Geneva Cross Country Summer 2019 Norway Trip Presentation. I believe we have a number of high schoolers here to, to do that presentation, so please come up, please give your name.
Is that what you thought, sir?
So we can put it in the minutes, so.
Ladies and gentlemen, I had the pleasure of meeting some of you outside today, but notice how Mr. Tomod Larson's not taking the podium, this is all up to you, man.
All right.
Like our coach is quiet back there as well.
Hi, my name is Eric Pomquist, I am a junior at Geneva High School. I'm gonna start off our presentation here, and introduce everyone behind me, this is Andrina Larson, she's also a junior, three-year cross-country runner, Lauren Hasty behind me, sophomore, Colby Coronado, sophomore, Abby McVeigh's a junior, that's Nathan Lehman, it's his first year, he's a freshman, and there's Adam Coats in the tie-dye, he's also a sophomore, and next to him is Josh Branstad, a sophomore as well.
All right, my name is Colby Coronado, as forementioned, I have the first part of this presentation, how would I go about this? Just a spacebar?
Yeah, what do you got?
Grab the mouse and you have to hit the slideshow.
We gotta get it started first. Excuse me? Oh no, it's just being, for sneaking.
If you're a cross-country gun.
I suppose too many does. Totally broke it.
Yes, I did.
Are we gonna need the Wizard of Oz behind the door to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know what you did.
All right, Colby's not coming.
Yes, here comes, here he comes, thank you. Peter.
He's trolling.
Yeah, let's just start.
I tried to escape, but it didn't work.
Let's just kill it and open it again. Start over, Alderman, again.
You know, next week, ladies and gentlemen, we have the tech club coming, so it's gonna be perfect.
There you go.
There we go.
There we go. Now a spacebar.
All right, so I have the introduction part of this presentation. The Geneva Vikings cross-country team will be going to Norway and many of its wonderful cities on the days of June 10th through 27th in the summer of 2019. While this is not everyone for the Geneva Vikings cross-country, country team, a few of us have self-funded the trip with some help from our parents, but some of us had done it on our own to raise the money to go to Norway.
Go up and hit the slideshow.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we will be traveling to Norway, one of the many great countries of the Northern Europe area. For the days of June 11th through 17th, we will be traveling to Oslo and experiencing many of the great things that the city has to offer. Being the capital of Norway, that's where most people will be residing as residents of the area. We will be visiting as the team to the Norwegian Olympic Training Center, as shown up there. We'll also be going to attend the Bisslet Games during, on the, I believe, the 13th of June. These are just a couple of things that they have to offer, we have several activities planned, a couple of boat rides of like a tour of some sort, we have nature walks in other areas.
All right, so I'm gonna be taking over, my name's Andrina Larson, I'm a junior. After we visit the capital of Norway, we're gonna go further up north and visit where my family's personally from, Hoshda, that's what we would say in Norway, but people in the US would say like Harstad, which, I don't know. Anyways, in the first picture, you can see like the mountains, if you look over, you can kind of see like that big mountain, and then there's kind of like a peninsula, there's actually lake houses up there, and there's Viking graves there too, so you know, like everyone here says we're the home of the Vikings, but actually the home of the Vikings is in Norway, I would say. So, in Hoshda, it's just like a small city, it's 25,000 people, so it's like the size of Geneva, and then on the left top, the picture is from downtown Hoshda, and then on the bottom, it's from downtown too, but it's just a little bit further out. And then on the top right, you see like a cannon, and you're just like, wow, there's just a cannon just there, but it's actually from World War II. Further up north, there's a lot of history from World War II, like there was fighting there, and the Germans actually had bunkers up there too, so we'll be visiting some of the history sites they have to offer. And then that's the midnight sun in that picture, because up north, it's 24 hours of light, so it kind of looks like it's a little bit dark, but it's actually light, and we're gonna be above the Arctic Circle, so that's why it's 24 hours of light. And then here are some other pictures of the nature.
So my name is Nathan Lehman, I'm a freshman, so our final destination on the trip will be to Loafetan from June 24th through the 27th. It is made up of a cluster of smaller islands up north, northern Norway, and as you can see there, very close, all connected, and while we're there, we plan on hiking, that's actually a soccer field built into the, one of the islands, we will be visiting there, so we'll be hiking, very scenic since we're gonna be so close to the ocean, there are some destinations to see, and then it's also a very big fishing village, so we'll, we plan on doing quite a bit of fishing there as well.
Now go back two slides, if you couldn't.
Oh, sorry.
Backspace.
Now go back, now go forward one. You ain't gonna be doing that in the left, are you?
I hope not.
Maybe. I think I see something attached.
We'll be on the right.
Yeah.
So that's Loafetan.
All right, once again, my name is Eric Pomquist, I'm a junior at Geneva High School. We have a variety of reasons for choosing Norway as a great place to train this summer, it's a great opportunity to learn about a different environment, different culture. There I go, I see those socks, I'm actually wearing the same socks.
Are you?
It's from a charity race that we do every year in August, that coincides with our interest squad, first cross-country meet of the year, it's been supporting the charity that the Larson's family run, and it's really a great atmosphere. If anyone wants to come out, it's the Christopher Big Heart 5K, usually in, what, third weekend of August, something like that. So that's one of our connections, we can learn about another culture and the history, you know, when we, when we think about something's historic here, it might be from 1880, but something from 980 would just be scratching the surface out in Norway, and explore our Viking heritage, you can't say that we're the home of the Vikings and claim all this historic Scandinavian culture without really exploring what it is there, and to represent Geneva, represent our town outside of our little sphere here. And finally, it's just to be a great team bonding activity, to really get to know each other better and to establish relationships that we hope to maintain for the rest of our life. So there are 14 people attending this trip, both runners, coaches, and chaperones, it is entirely self-funded, we are not getting any help from our school, because it is not, it is entirely unlike any other school trip, obviously, and we are seeking sponsorships, this will help us to, to travel and connect relationships with businesses and services in Geneva and the surrounding communities, and just help us really keep our mind off having to pay this on our own while we're on the trip, it's really gonna be a big help. So if we have any questions?
Have you asked Batavia St. Charles to perhaps provide this?
No, not yet.
Any questions? Hold on, we've got one.
Hey, kids.
Hello.
Students. Um, how, what type of fundraising have you already done? I'm curious.
We have been in contact both electronically and face-to-face with a couple of businesses. Back in the Snowmageddon, back in February, we did a couple manual driveway clearings, stuff like that, to get started and to help the community learn about our, our trip, and, and we're just gonna keep the ball rolling and, and as we're all connected and really understanding and getting our, our schedule down, we can start to understand the needs of what kind of funding we'll need as far as different, you know, a lot of the, I'm sure everyone knows Norway is not a cheap, cheap country to do anything at all, so this is something that, that, the average trip for students, about $2,500, and, and every, every dollar helps us, and it just, like I said before, helps us enjoy, because I know a lot of us are, if we have jobs and stuff like that, I know I'm paying for much, more than half of my trip, same thing with Colby and some of the other students here. It can really, we hope to absorb the culture and, and bring back, and pretty much the closest thing we, closest example to utopia that we have, bring it back to Geneva and hope to utilize some of those concepts, yeah.
I think that's awesome, um, so I assume everyone already has their passports in hand?
Correct, yes.
What airline are you flying out on?
We are on Scandinavian Airlines.
Oh, great. And then do you, does the cross-country team hope to make this an annual trip?
Maybe not annual, but at least on a, on a regular basis. Unfortunately, we won't be able, we won't be able to accept any of the outgoing seniors this year, so that was a disappointment due to some school rules, but I'm, I'm surely hoping that every student that goes through this program has the opportunity to experience a trip like we are going to have, and, and as we are the, kind of the inaugural trip, we hope to establish relationships with our businesses here that will not only help us throughout our basic seasons, but will contribute to some of our further endeavors later on the line.
And one last question, are you gonna meet up with any other cross-country teams from Norway?
Yeah, we hope to, we are right now in the process of making connections with some of the other teams there, learn how they train and, and teach them how we train, and, and hopefully there'll be some of our guides to the awesome trail systems that are in the area.
That's so cool, and definitely ask Scandinavian, Scandinavian Airlines for a big donation.
Yeah.
If you haven't already.
Have we done, I think we have, yeah.
Okay, that's good, thank you, that's great.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much, do appreciate it, there's no other questions, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, yeah, we all appreciate that you're taking the time to hear us today, it makes a big difference, thank you.
Thank you. The, the next presentation, which is gonna be a little hard to follow after the other ones, I mean, it's from the Union Pacific Metro Third Main Line, project update, so we will be getting an update on the third rail, I know, this is a tough one, you, now you gotta follow.
Uh-oh.
Oh, there it goes again. Oh, there it goes again. Ah, here, here we come. Solve it one more time.
Hang on just a second.
Yeah, no problem.
Get out of your way. Just hanging on me. There you go.
Thank you. Well, I would certainly, yeah, it looks like it's playing something, is that? Well, I would, I would say Union Pacific could offer transportation to them, but, um, we don't go that far.
Is it actually playing?
It looks like it's playing, but, rather than doing a slideshow. Luckily, it's very brief, so.
What is it doing? Oh, did you guys have a video before this thing?
No.
There we are.
Thank you. Well, good evening. I'm Lisa Stark, Assistant Vice President of Public Affairs for Union Pacific Railroad. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening to give you an update on the Metra Union Pacific Third Main Line project, which I think several of you have heard about over the past few years. And the project, I think, probably may be new to a couple of you, so to start, I just wanted to, to give you kind of a primer on Union Pacific's Metra operations in Chicagoland. And, what this first slide really represents is just an overview of the three lines in around Chicago where Union Pacific actually operates the Metra service. So we have the Union Pacific North Line that runs from Chicago up to Kenosha in Wisconsin. We have the Union Pacific Northwest Line that runs from Chicago out to Harvard, it's the line that I ride, to Barrington, most days when I'm in my office. And then we have the Union Pacific West Line, which runs from downtown Chicago out to Elburn, and obviously passes right through, right through Geneva. In particular, the West Line sees over a hundred trains a day. I'm sure you're very familiar with the, the heavy volumes that we have on that line, which are really a mix between both commuter trains as well as the Union Pacific freight trains. So, we entered into a public-private partnership with Metra back in two thousand eight to do a variety of improvements along this line. And one of those improvements that we are embarking on is adding a third main rail coming through the Geneva area, and then again, out in the, the Maywood Melrose Park area. And let me pull this map up. There we go. And as you can see on this slide, we are actually triple-tracked, except for in two critical locations, one being from West Chicago to Geneva, the other being from the border of River Forest to Melrose Park, where we only have two lines in place there. So what you see with our rail traffic that's coming in and out of downtown Chicago to Elburn and points on, onto the west, is we're triple-tracked in certain areas, we go down to a bottleneck of two tracks, we go back to three tracks, and then we go back to two tracks, which that really creates issues when we have backups on the line, or we have, you know, an issue with a Metro train or a mechanical issue, we don't have the ability to get around that and keep our traffic moving fluidly. So what we're doing is adding one point eight miles of additional line for that third track, as I mentioned, from the border of River Forest to Melrose Park. That project is underway currently. We are actually anticipating that that will be complete by end of September. We'll continue to do some additional signal work out there, but we, we anticipate that that portion of our project will actually be in service by the end of this year, so we'll start seeing some benefits from that. And then, specific to Geneva, which I'm sure you're the most interested in, we're adding an additional six point one miles of third main line track from West Chicago to Geneva, or a better way for you locals to, to picture where that would be, it's from Crest, from Crest to Peck Roads, is where that third main line track will be installed. We are right now in the final stages of our acquiring the properties that we need for that, from a variety of property owners in Geneva. I know we're also, have been having discussions with, with the city in regards to some needed properties for that as well. We do anticipate that in July, we will put that project out to bid, and we're hoping to award the project sometime in the second or third quarter of twenty nineteen. And we have probably, you know, with that award timing, and obviously, winter coming, coming upon us, at the end of this year, we probably will be looking realistically at a construction start time of second quarter of twenty twenty. And we do anticipate there's gonna be about an eighteen to twenty-four month construction window for that project. As we've reported at, at some previous council meetings, we are working and have had very productive conversations with the city, such that we are aware of summer and fall festivals that would be occurring in town, so that we can try to accommodate those, especially with traffic circulation, because obviously, we're gonna have to, you know, there's gonna be a lot of construction going on, and we will have some intermittent, you know, impacts to the existing crossing locations in the city. So we're keeping a close pulse and working with city staff on that. And, I mean, for the most part, we're about, we're moving forward in the permit process. We have one more permit to get from the Corps of Engineers for the project that we anticipate is coming any day now. We're checking, checking our inboxes for that. But, you know, we have, obviously, worked with the city for, I've been working on this project for three and a half years. Eleven years, okay, so Stephanie, eleven years, I can't, I can't beat that, but I will. But I will tell you, we've had a great, a great partnership. We really appreciate it. Your staff's been absolutely fantastic to work with, you know. I wouldn't, the word accommodating, I wouldn't say, I would just say responsive, because there's obviously been things, you know, issues that we've, that we've had to work through, such that there could be a win-win on both sides of that, but we certainly appreciate the city's support in recognizing what that third track means for our freight and our commuter fluidity. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I also have Rick Conrath with me tonight, who's with Benish, and he's been our, our project design manager for that as well. So, if you have technical questions, he's, he's the guy. So, happy to answer any of you have some.
Any questions? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Chairman Marks. Hi, I'm so sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Lisa, Lisa Stark, with two I's, L.I.I.S.A.
Oh, thank you. Okay, um, so, I'm curious, why is it that there are those two areas that only have the two tracks when the rest of the line is, has three tracks?
You know, we inherited that railroad when we acquired the Chicago Northwestern. I honestly don't know, back in the day, why we wouldn't have had the full triple-track all the way through there. And, and to be honest, there may not have been a need for it, you know. We acquired the, the Chicago Northwestern back in nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six timeframe, so the world has changed since then. Technological innovation has allowed us to, to operate differently. Our, what we're running on that track today is probably looks a little bit different than was being run on there, you know, over twenty years ago.
Okay, thank you. Also, up there on the screen, it says that there's a hundred eighty-eight million budget for this project, and the split is fifty-six, forty-four, is that between the Geneva location and the one further east? Is that what that means?
So, so what that represents is, as I had mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, was just that we have entered back in two thousand eight into an agreement with Metra to do four different projects all along our West Line corridor. So what that entailed was, we did some station and safety upgrades, we did some signal system modernization, we installed new crossover so that trains could more fluidly change tracks. And then the last portion of that agreement is this third main line construction. So when that's said and done, and when that last segment is completed here in Geneva, we're anticipating that the overall project spend would be a hundred and eighty-eight million. For, so for everything you see up there, the, the third main line project itself, the eight-plus miles of new track that we're putting in is about to the tune of a hundred and twelve-plus million dollars.
Got it.
And that's a, that's a, obviously, a big investment. The split for that is the fifty-six percent UP, forty-four percent Metra. They've been, they've been a, a great partner with that, so it's, you know, it's a, a public-private partnership for that investment.
Okay, just so I understand, you said that, the one hundred twelve million is the cost of this project. What is, what is the one eighty-eight, then?
So that's the total of the, of all the four phases of our total agreement with Metra, so it includes the other, the other projects that have, were previously completed.
I understand, okay. And, I've asked this question before, but, is there going to be an increase in train traffic?
Right. So there's no anticipated increase in rail traffic on that line right now. Metra's not, we're looking to add trains, freight trains, we're not looking to add trains on that line. This project was always about fluidity and being able to move what we move today more efficiently, such that we don't have idling trains sitting in neighborhoods. And what happens here with, with us operating the Metra service, is we actually have two train curfews per day, so we really don't operate freight trains twice a day, once from, from six to nine AM, and then again in the evenings from four to seven PM, such that we can allow for that rush commuter time for the Metro train. So what we see, what happens with that six-hour timeframe that we're not really moving our freight trains, is we see a backlog going back out into, you know, really out into Iowa. So this is really, again, the efficiency, so we can get the trains into Chicago more fluidly and quickly. And just as a, you know, an anecdotal type of thing, you know, the trains, you know, that we run have hundreds and hundreds of cars on them. And, if you're adding more trains, I mean, that's a large volume of additional product that's moving on the railroad. We don't, you know, we tend to ebb and flow with what's happening with the economy, and we just don't see a huge influx of one product that's gonna all of a sudden have to be moved. I mean, our, our, our book of business is very diversified, so we may see an uptick, for example, when you have a lot of housing starts. We may see an uptick in lumber moving, but at the same time, we may see a decrease in coal running. So it really kinda balances itself out, balances itself out and keeps our train numbers fairly steady.
Okay, and the length of the trains, especially the freight trains, is projected to remain about the same? Or do you see those getting longer?
So, we are, we've, are in the process of evaluating our entire network and looking to see, how can we be more efficient with what it is that we're moving today? How can we serve our customers, you know, on, on time and get them the products that they need that helps build America every day? We are, I don't anticipate right now that we're gonna see much change, because we're already running trains along that corridor that have been, you know, the same size for, for quite a long time. And, that's probably been a change that we've seen over probably the last eighteen months or so. So what you're seeing there today will probably be what we continue to see.
Okay, so again, it's anticipated right now that the, this project would sort of be completed in the summer of twenty twenty-two?
If I'm doing my math correctly, yeah. Eighteen to twenty-four months, I mean, that's of course, given, you know, what we have going on with weather, right? That always is, is going to be impactful. But, if we start construction in Q2 of twenty twenty, you know, you're looking at eighteen to twenty-four months after that. So it could be, it could be a, probably a twenty twenty-two completion.
Okay, thanks. Everything.
Any other questions? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you very much for coming out and speaking with us tonight, I appreciate it. I don't know if this is too detailed of a question for this presentation, but I'm sure as you're well aware, a lot of this is gonna be, this work is gonna be done right up against people's homes, going through neighborhoods. And I'm just wondering, what kind of work hours? I think in theory, you, you could work twenty-four-seven if you choose to, but that would obviously be very difficult on the people that live along these lines. So, do you have any idea what type of hours you're planning on following, or is, is that something that you can't answer yet?
Well, we'll be able to, I mean, that will be more definitive once we get a contractor on board and they do it, but I can tell you, we've been doing all the work on the, the eastern segment on that during regular daytime business hours. We have not had any conversations about that changing. Obviously, you know, that is impactful, especially if people are, you know, trying to sleep. So we have to do it with, obviously, within the windows that we can get it, you know, get in there and actually do the work. I don't know, Rick, if there's anything to add to that.
I, I would say probably just, there may be certain times, like when we have to set beams across Route thirty-one, that would, that will be dictated by the Department of Transportation, when you can close the highway and things like that. But by and large, I think it would be daytime. And the same, same with the river crossings, they have to do it when, you know, when that can be done, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Burkhard?
Will there be, thanks for being here and giving us the update. Will Metra commuters see much of a impact during the construction period?
No, I mean, we, they shouldn't. You know, we do work along our tracks all the time. We have inspection, inspection cars that are running out there every day, we're replacing ties. I mean, it's a well-oiled machine in terms of that, so they should not. What they will see, though, at the project completion, you know, if we have, for example, you know, a mechanical issue on one of our trains, and it stops on a track and it's blocking, I'm sure everybody who's ridden the train into downtown has experienced this at some point, where it, it delays every train that's coming behind it, right? This will give us the ability to move around those types of issues, so we really think that that will help with, you know, with on-time performance and service.
I'm sorry, did you? Oh, do you wanna say anything about parking? I don't have the most decent update, but here, you're right, that's a good, a good point, just in terms of what's gonna happen with, with the parking arrangement during, during construction.
Parking will have to be phased. We have to construct the new, the new bridge on it lot, I think, call it Lot Three, I think, east of Illinois Route thirty-one. A, a portion of that will be closed to the public so that we, we can get in there and safely build the retaining walls and, and the improvements there. Then, the lot here, for a period of time, will be shut down, because the new track will be constructed on the south side, and you can't safely do that construction with automobile traffic coming in and out. So, Metra is working diligently to provide temporary parking and, and those types of situations. That's part of why an additional level was placed on the parking deck to accommodate that. And so, there will be parking impacts, short-term, while the project is being constructed. But, while, other than that, they really shouldn't see. And I, I was a West Line commuter for a number of years as well, and they completed a project, kinda like Lisa said, over, between Elmhurst and Bellwood, and it was right adjacent, and no, no impact at all to train operations that was noticeable, so.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Thank you.
Any other? Alderman McGowan again, if there's no one else?
Thank you. Regarding the Fox River Trail, will that be closed at all because of the construction?
No, we anticipate at this point that there will be access to that available throughout the project. I don't know if there's any portion of the project, that we were able to work around that, to keep that access open.
Okay, so even the, my next question, the Fox Valley Marathon, I think they use that, and would that event be affected at all by the construction?
They're aware of the construction. We've kept them informed, so as far as we know, they, they're making whatever arrangements they need to make.
Okay, that's good. I did have an, okay, sorry. Go ahead.
The, the south leg of the, south leg access on the west side of the river will be detoured, but there will always be access to the trail.
Oh, that's great. Okay, that's good to know. And, something, oh, adding the third rail, you know, and if you're familiar with the Geneva Metra Station, commuters are constantly walking back and forth over the tracks to get from like, the parking area, to maybe go into the station to buy their tickets and vice versa, or you're on the platform and the announcer says, okay, actually, your train is coming on, and on the other side, so everyone has to scoot over to the other side quickly. But, what kind of safety measures are put in place for pedestrians during construction? And then, once the third rail is there, and maybe people just aren't used to the fact that they now have to kind of look in, I, I don't know, it kind of is silly, but accidents happen, because people just don't look both directions, or underestimate the speed of an oncoming train, especially a freight train. So, what, what changes or safety signage, or anything like that, is going to, like, be installed?
There are very detailed maintenance of traffic plans for pedestrians, as well as for the automobile traffic, so that they are directed, you know, to the safe routes through and around the project. I think the, the diversions are done here, right? The platform diversions to take people away at the crossings, get them behind the barriers, so when the trains are approaching, you know, they, they can't be, they can't get trapped, so to speak, in, between the track and the gate, the, the platform diversion, take them out and around, and that will continue to be the case with the new improvements, so.
And I've seen cars, you know, that are in a hurry, even now, they drive around a, a gate that's down. And I can imagine that with construction, it will cause maybe more traffic, especially if you're closing off a north-south route, then the other north-south access points over the tracks are gonna be more congested, and more drivers may be tempted to go around a, a railroad gate that's down. So, what kind of deterrence are gonna be put in place to prevent, you know, accidents from happening?
So, we, I mean, as, as Rick had, had commented on during, you know, obviously during construction, there will be a there will be appropriate detours that are established for, you know, pedestrians as, as well as vehicular traffic. Unfortunately, across our entire system, we work so hard to try to change driver behavior so they don't go around the gates. Um, but what we will be trying to do is to limit the, the extent of the closures as much as we can. And I believe for the, the closures that we have to do, the updated timeframe that we're anticipating those, at Western, it's at Third, right, right here? And then the Route 31 is going to be the duration of the closures?
Oh, the duration. I think we're, we're looking at eight weeks, I believe, for Third, Third and for Western. And, uh, we've projected, I think, sixteen weeks for Route 31. But that one, that, there'll be a lot of variables there that are contractor-driven that we don't control in design right now. So that could be longer or shorter depending on how the contractor builds the bridge.
Well, the Route 31 crossing, I guess, doesn't really matter because cars are going underneath the tracks or just not using that road at all. So then it's just the Western Avenue and then Third Street. And I'm sure the Geneva police have already talked about this or considered it, so, um, but I think it would be great to have like security cameras and a sign saying like, you know, if you try to cross, we will, kind of like a red light camera, but that's just me. So I'm not sure if that's something that's been done, or?
We always appreciate partnerships with our local enforcement agencies to help enfor, I mean, really, to help enforce crossing violations. That's a, a huge tool for us. But, you know, you've brought up something, and I'm, I'm gonna ask the city if there's, if it's possible to either put something in a newsletter or put something on the website related to the project as it comes up, and maybe include a link even to our website that talks about rail safety.
We currently have a, a page on the website dedicated to this, and we will continue to update that with, with all of the information. So, I mean, again, I don't think you can rule out stupidity.
But we do certainly absolutely appreciate your concern about safety. We share that with you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Alderman, Ruby?
Can we just get a, a quick PSA on what, what are the, what is the law with the crossing? If, if the gate is open but the lights are still flashing?
Oh, you, you've got me, 'cause I'm a mom, and I talk to my children about this every time we come up to a railroad crossing. So the law is that if the gates, and so, in order to proceed at a railroad crossing, once the gates and the lights are, have been activated, you have to have, excuse me, the gates have to be completely in the up position and all the lights and flashers have to be off before it is legal to proceed.
And what is the fine if?
The state of Illinois, I think it's upwards, I'm gonna look at my, yeah, it was increased a few years ago. The state, the legislature increased the base for those fines, so it went up. I would, I would trust my law enforcement partners over there.
Yeah, that, that would be a good reminder to include with our information. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman McGowan again.
Okay, also, um, what about, like, people know they're not supposed to stop on the tracks, you know, in a traffic backup? Sometimes a driver will anticipate that there's enough space, but now with the, all of the traffic being condensed more into, onto, um, two out of these three crossings, with one either Route 31, um, Third Street, or Western Avenue being closed, um, you know, I could see more drivers thinking they have enough room, but then all of a sudden, traffic comes to an abrupt halt, and then their, their car is kind of stuck either fully or partially on the tracks. So do we already have signage, um, saying like, do not stop on the tracks? And if not, can that be put in place?
I don't, I don't know. Do you think, do, do we?
I've seen it in other communities, I just don't recall if it's over there. I know it's in my community, and people still stop in the middle of the tracks, and it drives me absolutely crazy, but, but that may be something, I mean, that's not something that the railroad has jurisdiction over.
We'll take a look at it, but I think too, we need to make sure that we're respectful of the construction and the safety guards that they put in place for the construction that they're required to put into place so that, so that everything is, you don't miss things because you're trying to add more signage, which takes away from the signage to deviate from the construction zone. So I mean, I think the railroad, I think Lisa would, would agree that safety is of their utmost importance.
Absolutely.
I mean, we're talking about doing safety improvements to the Western Avenue crossing for pedestrians through this project. That's one of the things that will come out of this project. They did the safety upgrades not too long ago at the Third Street, again, for pedestrian safety with the, another train coming warnings and all of that. So I think that is certainly of the first and foremost of everybody's mind.
Yeah, I guess I would definitely like to request that, if it's possible, put up the signs that say, do not stop on the tracks. Or just if it's not too much information for people. I think it's something that would be good for the city to look into doing. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I don't see anyone. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We do appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is to approve the regular committee of the whole minutes from April 22nd, 2019, and special committee of the whole minutes from April 15th, 2019, and April 29th, 2019. Motion by Clemmons?
Second.
Second by Ruby. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Items of business. Consider suspending the rules to allow Alderman Marx to chair this meeting and vote on all actions, item, action items on this agenda. Motion by Alderman McGowan, second by Alderman Berghardt. Use the lights. Thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is for B. Consider draft resolution to sell surplus publicly owned properties for the gross amount of six hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred thirteen, including compensation for temporary construction licenses on parcels A, B, and C to Union Pacific Railroad Company. Do you have? Yeah, okay, we do. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Berghardt?
Second.
Second by Clemmons?
Um, so in the interest of time, the next four items are all related to this third main line project, which is one of the reasons we had UP here this evening to give you some background information. So the first item is authorizes the sale of property to the UP of not less than eighty percent of the appraised value. Uh, this is land that they needed in order to, to complete their project. And if you don't mind, give me a little leeway, I'll just talk a little bit about each of them, and then you can move forward. The next item is temporary construction licenses. So these are areas where the railroad needs the property either for staging or for some other purpose for a short period of time. We're not actually selling them the property, we're just kind of giving them a lease for a period of time. And then the last two items relate to the relocation of electric assets and segments of a wa, a water main due to the project. As the assets are located on city property or within easements, the cost of relocation is an eligible reimbursement item by the Union Pacific Railroad. Uh, the city attorney has reviewed all of these items, so everything is in order. Uh, some of these items have been negotiated items, other items are per an agreement. So again, all four of these items are directly related to the third main line project. Do you have additional questions? We still have Lisa Stark here with us. We also have Director Babica, who I think stepped out. Superintendent Wright's here, and certainly I can answer any as well.
Are there any questions on item four B? Seeing none? Voice vote is okay? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item four C. Consider draft resolution approving the execution of temporary construction licenses to the Union Pacific Railroad Company.
So moved.
Motion by Clemmons?
Second.
Second by Alderman McGowan. Any questions, comments? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously again. Item four D. Consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a reimbursement agreement between the Union Pacific Railroad Company and the City of Geneva in the amount of three hundred seventy-three thousand forty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents to relocate certain electric division assets between South Third Street and the Fox River. Motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Berghardt, second. Second by Swanson. Comments, questions?
Yes, a question for Hal.
Go ahead, Alderman Berghardt.
Is there any benefit to this, what we're doing? Is this, we're only doing this because of the railroad project, or is there any benefit we're getting?
That's pretty much the whole of it. It's, it's almost a hundred percent due to the railroad works.
Gotcha.
And some of it's coming overhead underground. If you think that's a benefit, then, you know, there's that benefit. But other than that?
We wouldn't be pursuing it unless...
We wouldn't be pursuing it, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item four E. Consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a reimbursement agreement between the Union Pacific Railroad Company and the City of Geneva in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-two cents to relocate segments of a water main behind Brigham Court, Brigham Court. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Berghardt, second. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Ruby. Comments, questions? Alderman McGowan?
Have the resident, have the residents been notified of this work?
Mr. Babica is coming up. Director of Public Works.
This is a sixteen-inch transmission line that basically shadows the south side of the Union Pacific Railroad tracks and does not impact the residents, uh, their water services or any of their distribution. So there really was no need other than to give them a notice that we're gonna be working in their city property that is adjacent to their property.
Okay, yeah, 'cause it looks, it looks like, um, the houses on Brigham back up to the tracks, and those are the ones I would kind of be aware of construction going on. But you said that they were notified, those residents were kind of notified?
Yeah, that, their property doesn't trip back up to the tracks, there's actually a fairly significant city-owned parcel where this water main is located. So it's their, how, their property, the city-owned parcel, then the railroad right-of-way. And we were working on the city-owned proper, parcel.
Okay, but you, you did mention, though, that the residents were notified?
Mm-hmm.
That the, okay, with like a door hanger or?
A combination of door hangers and notices that were mailed out.
Okay, just in case we get any questions. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Hearing none, seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously. Uh, item four F. Consider draft resolution listing exempt development slash projects for the revised Kane County stormwater ordinance. Need a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Alderman McGowan? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Berghardt. Questions, comments?
I'll just briefly.
But then we'll go to you.
Uh, so Kane County is updating the stormwater ordinance. As part of this process, developments or projects that have been previously submitted and that the city has approved their stormwater plans can be exempted from the new ordinance and completed under the existing ordinance. Only projects that have completed, that have been completed and approved a stormwater review are eligible for this exemption. Uh, in the packet tonight lists those projects that would be eligible, and so this resolution is just requesting that we make those exempt from the new ordinance so that, basically, you're not changing the rules midstream. They know what they're required to do and what they have to do, and you're not having to change the rules. Uh, if there's additional questions, we do have Director Babica to answer those.
Can I ask questions? Hearing none, seeing none? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Alderman McGowan?
Oh, thank you. Um, I did notice that it's, it seemed like all of Northwestern Delmore Hospital was included as one whole entity as being exempt, instead of just like one little project at, or sorry, one project at a building at Northwestern. So how does that play out into the future?
So Northwestern is a, is a PUD, so their whole property is considered one big project, and the little projects within it, as long as it complies with their PUD. So that's why they're exempted or are proposed to be exempted.
All right, makes sense to me. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? We'll vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item four G. Consider approval of certificate of acceptance for Campbell Row townhomes at the southwest corner of Campbell and Fourth Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Berghardt?
Second.
Second by Alderman Clemmons?
Okay. So this is a certificate of acceptance for the public right-of-way improvements and sanitary sewer main to accommodate the Campbell Row subdivision, as stated, on Campbell and Fourth Street. Uh, with the certificate of acceptance, the remaining balance of the corresponding letter of credit supplied by the developer can be released. So essentially, our engineer is saying they've done what they needed to do.
Comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item four H. Consider draft resolution authorizing bid award and purchase of materials for 2019, 2020 underground electric cable replacement from Wesco in the amount of forty-four thousand one hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Swanson? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Berghardt?
Sure. Uh, so for this one, staff solicited and received four sealed bids for materials for the underground electric replacement program, which is included as, in the approved fiscal year twenty budget. The work is to take place in five locations: Center Street from Anderson to Grant, The Muse and Kinston Courts, East State Street from Longview to Kirk Road, and Route 31 and Third Street, and Dunston Road south of Fargo. Uh, staff is recommending the lowest qualified bidder as Wesco. Um, and then again, if there's additional questions, we do have Superintendent Wright with us this evening.
Any questions? All right, then. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item four I. Recommend draft resolution authorizing the city administrator to declare surplus vehicles and equipment as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman McGowan, second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Ruby?
Okay, so we recently compiled a list of vehicles and equipment that are no longer utilized. Uh, the list is in your packet. The resolution would authorize that all these items be declared surplus. Any items that have a resale value will be either sold at auction, um, or however we dispose of them, and the proceeds are returned to the appropriate fund.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, we are down to new business, public comment. Is there any new business from the dais? Alderman Clemmons?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, uh, thank the, all the city staff, especially Public Works and police, with everything that happened with that water main break, or I should say, breaks. I heard very little complaining about that. I think people knew everybody was working very hard on it. It was, I was astounded at how quickly it was resolved. Um, so on top of everything else you've dealt with over this endless winter, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Any other new business from the dais? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Chairman Marx. I'm, just wanted to mention something. I've been speaking with some residents in the fourth ward who've been dealing with AT&amp;T construction. They're installing the fiber optic lines. So, um, it's, it's been disruptive, but, um, I just wanted to, um, recognize AT&amp;T. When we met on Saturday morning at Northern Illinois Food Bank for our annual city council retreat with the city staff, I noticed a large group of AT&amp;T volunteers working, um, and, uh, sorting donated foods. So I went and spoke with a few people and learned that AT&amp;T is actually one of the a few people and learned that AT&amp;T is actually one of the longest-running volunteer groups at the Northern Illinois Food Bank, which of course is located here in Geneva. Some of the volunteers I spoke with had been, are AT&amp;T employees, and they've been coming every Saturday for over twenty years. So, it's really quite impressive. Um, the ladies I spoke with don't even live in the area. They live maybe about forty-five minutes to an hour away. So, um, and the woman that I spoke with, who was a, who was at the front desk of the food bank, said that AT&amp;T is by far the biggest volunteer group that, um, comes and helps with the sorting of food at the food bank. So, I just wanted to mention that I think it's very commendable of AT&amp;T employees to do that, so they are giving back to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other business or comments from the dais? Any from the public? Please come forward. Name an address now.
Hi, thanks for having me. Uh, my name is Sarah Schaefer. I live at 2837 Miller Road in Geneva. Um, we've lived here about a year and a half. So, um, somewhat new residents, but I'm from the area, or not from the area, but have lived in the area for almost twenty years. Um, I actually had a question about, one of the things about the Western Avenue thing, is that, should I have asked it back then, or can I still ask about it? Okay, um, so, it actually, this is not what I came for, but, um, actually, just last week, I was sitting, um, at the, while there was a train, and I noticed, um, that at the sidewalk, there's no, um, gate for pedestrians. And those trees are pretty, which is ironic, 'cause my other thing is about trees. Um, the trees are really tall, and you cannot see at all. I know the trains are loud, but like, there's a park there and pools there, and I just, it just seems...
There is some pedestrian safety enhancements planned for the Western Avenue. I don't know the specifics on them, but that is a big topic that the city had talked about, that we needed improvements for that.
That is fantastic, because I, listening to all the other talk, I was like, "Oh, yeah, it's kind of appropriate." It just came up. Um, okay, so the reason I'm actually here, um, I've actually, I think I emailed with my alderman, um, probably a couple months ago, just briefly. I wasn't really sure where to, um, how I was supposed to go about this, but, um, I noticed when Fresh Time and At Home came into the area, excuse me, I'm so sorry, um, when they redid all of the, um, the landscaping, uh, one day, there were lots and lots of trees, and the next day, there were, like, no trees. Um, so when, um, when that construction happened, it was kind of shocking when, um, literally dozens and dozens of trees were taken down. And over the course of the last couple months, they have definitely made improvements. The landscaping looks pretty nice. Um, it looks very nice, but there's still, um, a lack of trees. Um, and considering the rest of the corridor has, um, a lot of beautiful trees and mature trees, I just, I would just propose that there'd be some, something put in place that possibly more trees could be planted. Um, I live directly behind, um, Fresh Time and At Home, so there is a large row of trees there that kind of is a buffer, um, to our neighborhood, which is nice for noise and for light purposes and, um, traffic, you know, um, when cars come in, like the headlights. Um, I recently noticed that there were other trees that were cut down, um, right by, like, O'Reilly's, O'Reilly Auto Parts, and like the Vane Clinic. There are about four or five trees cut down. And I was happy to see last week that they planted some there, like, to replace them. So, I'm just hoping that that might be something that's in the works, um, to replace some of the trees, excuse me, some of the trees that were taken down, um, during that project. So, um, I, and I just want to say that, um, I think that the beautification in Geneva is wonderful, so I'm not, I'm not saying anything negative about, um, about our town and our city, because I think, um, everybody does a wonderful job. But if there could be just a few more trees, that's what I came for. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other new business or comments? Alderman McGowan?
Is it appropriate for me to reply to that briefly?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I would recommend, um, Sarah, that you contact David DeGroot, who's on, or you can find his information on the city website. Um, it's DeGroot, and I can write down the name later or after the meeting for you, but he can do the best. I can kind of reiterate some of it, but he can, um, explain really, really well the, um, the trees that were cut down. Um, the property owner, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, they had to either pay money to the City of Geneva to be used to plant additional trees elsewhere in the city, um, along parkways, or, and I think that's what it was. It was like, Stephanie, you can explain it?
As part of the, as part of the plan for that development, there was a landscape plan that the city council did review and did approve. And with that, the removal of the trees was approved, but they did have to pay into the tree fund or plant additional trees. There's, it depends on the type of tree and the class of tree. Um, so, so if you need more information on that, David DeGroot is certainly the appropriate party. But there was a, a landscape plan that came along with that development. And so, by removing the trees, they can't just remove them. They actually had to either plant certain other plants or pay into the tree fund.
So, they're not necessarily planting trees in the area, they're just planting trees in Geneva?
What they do is they contribute to a tree fund so that the city can then plant tree, uh, trees elsewhere.
Elsewhere?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
So, but they, but they had to have a landscape plan, and it had to be approved by the council, and that was all done.
So, it's not a City of Geneva area? It's like their, their property?
Correct. It's part of the property.
Okay, so that's helpful to know.
Yep.
So, then they're just gone.
Yeah, but I think, I think as, as time goes, you'll see that some of the plantings that they plant will mature. And, and, and yes, it's not gonna be your high trees because...
And I understand why they removed some of them for the visibility. I totally get it, 'cause they were really, really large. But, um, okay, well, that answers, at least answers my question. So, thanks.
And part B of my comment was, um, I'd be interested in just asking the property owner if they would maybe consider putting in some trees. That wasn't a part of the original plan, but the landscaping that's in there is very low to the ground. And, um, I don't think, you know, it can hurt to ask, like, would they consider planting some things in? The residents really miss the trees. A lot of those residents are their customers. And it wouldn't be something that totally blocks the view of the stores. People know that the stores are there, but I think there could be like a compromise if they would just be willing to consider that. I think it would be nice. I'd be happy to ask them myself if I'm able to get their contact information. So, just something, exactly. There's all different sizes of trees. So, I think it's a really wonderful, um, thing to ask, and I'm glad that you came to the meeting tonight. So, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other business or comments? Hearing none, seeing none. I need a motion for adjournment? Motion by Alderman Ruby, second by Alderman Burghart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Microphones are off.